Did you get fired in 2007?
She's here so we can get started. This is the Ocean Shores Plan Commission. You Zoom and the date is October 27, 2020. And it's about 2:00 PM. So I have a roll call. Please, I'll call your name and say here. Greg Cox?
I'm here.
Eleanor?
Here.
Rich?
Here.
Anya?
Here.
Dawn?
You.
Richard?
Here.
And I'm Dan Berger. And we also have with us the mayor and Scott Anderson. Okay, next is, do I have a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
I'll move.
Second.
Who's second?
Richard.
Okay. So move. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 14, 2020?
I was not there, so I don't know if I could approve.
I'll move. I move.
And I'll second.
Any discussion?
Who who seconded?
Richard.
Any discussion? Okay. So group. Sir, do we have any public comment?
I did not receive any written public comment and there is no... There is one citizen present, Marlene. Do you have a public comment?
No, I don't. I'm just here to listen.
Okay, thank you. That would conclude public comment.
Okay.
Marlene, I forgot your last name.
Henry.
Henry, P E N R Y.
Our next topic is the special future Plan Commission items led by our mayor.
All right, thank you. I I have some future agenda items that I've talked to council about. And I think I think they're kind of interesting and I hope you will find them interesting as well. One of them goes back to the comp plan at proposed since it hasn't been approved yet. Dark skies. And I think it would be appropriate and useful for Ocean Shores. If we applied that and fleshed it out. You know, what is it we need to do? What what standard do we want to set? And and what's our purpose in doing that? And, you know, what do home builders have to do? And is it any different than what people in their own home have to do to make this happen? And is it a different standard for business areas, which I assume there will be and residential? And putting something together that can be enforced, illumination levels. You know, if you have that, what seems like a spotlight coming through your your bedroom window. Is it really, does it really, you know, not meet a standard? So it would be great to have a standard. And it would be great to have some language about shields and reflectors and all of those things that people could use to keep their light in their own backyard and not share it with their neighbors. And, you know, what is non-conforming lighting? What does that look like? And how long would somebody have to meet a standard if they have, you know, illuminated their their yard kind of like a prison? And are we going to make them remove all of that immediately? Or do they have a certain amount of time to replace those things? Those are all things that would need to be discussed and and fleshed out. And, you know, would we ban some form of of some forms of lighting? And would we exempt some forms of lighting? So I think there's just a lot of pieces. And how do we want to permit this? I'm assuming that we would need permitting if we have such a thing as a lighting standard. And some places have committees that decide what's okay. And but if we have illumination standards, maybe that's enough. I don't know. What about outdoor illuminated signs? I mean, there's just a lot of bits and pieces. But I think that it's a real opportunity for Ocean Shores to grow up a little bit and have standards for those things that they haven't had in the past.
Excellent idea. I love it.
Well, and it was part of what you guys talked about in the comp plan. And so I think that would be really apropos. And you've already got a little leg up on it already. And personally, I believe in it, you know. And and I think that the council does too. I think that we've come to a point where there's so much growth going on and that sort of thing that if we don't do something now, we're not going to have... Well, we'll just have that many more people that have done something that their neighbors don't like and that we have to kind of corral them in.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I may have haven't been attending the city council meetings. But and I appreciate you highlighting the, no pun intended, dark sky initiative. But that's 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 one of a number of things in the proposed comp plan that I'd like, I'm hoping that we get to shed some light on. Where are we with the comp plan? Are we, has the city council made any progress in terms of reviewing it?
They have not. They have postponed it until the first of the year because they're so wrapped up in the budget at this point. And, you know, it's been a difficult year. We had several months when we were not allowed to do anything except COVID-related activities in the council. And it put the city and the council behind on a lot of things. And I know it's frustrating to put your work out there and have it just kind of sit. And it's like, oh, come on, people, let's let's get on with this. But I assure you that they will. And I I, you know, I think there's a lot of good feeling about the comp plan. I think I think, you know, there are some folks who want to add their own things to it as well. But I think generally, I I personally have recommended just pass it now. And you can always amend it. But I I don't think that's going to be what they want to do. I think they want to go through chapter by chapter and and work on it.
And how long will that take?
Sorry?
How long will that take if it's going chapter by chapter?
Um, they're going to have Linda in to do that and they're going to have study sessions, so they say. So I'm I'm assuming that they will take it a chapter or two or three at a time and go through those things. They're most interested, I think, some of them in the environmental chapter. So I don't know exactly how long it'll take. Dawn, you had something?
Yeah, it just seems to me to Greg's question. What we are looking at doing is saying, okay, what we did in the comp plan really was to lay out some potential policies and goals. So the dark skies initiative happens to be one of those goals. And what you're asking us to do, as I understand it, is to develop recommended policies around that goal for consideration by the city. And I think that's that's the way we ought to be proceeding with the comp plan is as the council identifies those goals that we put into the plan that they want to pursue, then we'll help them pursue.
I I believe that's the case. So this would, this I I hope will not be a six-month process on this one. This seems like a a smaller piece, but maybe it's not. Maybe I just don't understand the all the the pieces and things that go along with it. But anyway, it it would be a place to start. I also have a couple of other things that, I mean, you guys can mull over and decide what you'd like to start on first, if any of them. So let me talk about the next one. Let's see. Okay, and it's signage. The Planning Commission did a signs ordinance a number of years ago now. And it is felt to be outdated. And so it really needs, I don't know if it needs to to be modified or if you just need to start over. It doesn't deal with a lot of things. And as the city has grown, we've become a little more cluttered. And some things have become problems that we, you know, probably didn't anticipate. Sandwich boards, for one. Businesses are allowed to have one sandwich board and they can have it only on their own premise premises. And that's all well and fine if you're on a main street. But if you're on a backstreet with your business, you you don't have a way of pointing people toward your business. Or like the Food Bank wanted to have, in fact, had a sandwich board that they put out on Ocean Shores Boulevard. And we had to tell them, no, you can't have that. You have to have that on your own premises. So they were hoping to kind of advise people that they were there. And because that's the rule, we had to say, no, you can't do that. So a sandwich boards would be a consideration. Way signs, this has been something that's been discussed a number of times. And I don't know if you want to do anything with it or not. But Ocean Shores is pretty flat and there are no landmarks for orientation. And believe it or not, even in a small town, people get kind of turned around and they have difficulty finding their way. And having way signs that said this way to something, you know, even little pointy ones would would be helpful. People have told me. We also have a proliferation of these sort of feather-shaped flags. I think they must be relatively inexpensive for the businesses. They're totally unregulated. We don't refer to them in our sign code. And so these are all things that we would like to see addressed. But also, the businesses are interested, and I'm glad to see Rich Hartman on here, in having a new sign code. And John Martin, the mayor pro tem, is also very interested in this. And I think Pat Brunstedt is interested in this. And so they they could give you their input. And of course, as always, you choose what you wish to do with that input as planning commission members. But I think working closely with the business community would be helpful. And maybe even making a simpler sign code. I think ours is really not very user-friendly. And it's it's got a lot of sort of awkward things about it. And I at least have how he's found it difficult to use. So that would be another opportunity is to address signs in Ocean Shores. We're we're looking pretty busy out there with signs and even city signs. Maybe you guys have a recommendation for something the city could do with their signs so that there are perhaps fewer of them. Whatever. Like when you go out on the beach approaches, there's just this whole proliferation of signs. And everybody has kind of covered themselves. Like if we've got a sign and something happens, well, we're safe because we warned people. But when there's 20 signs all there in the same spot, that's not very useful to people. So do they notice that it says riptide? I don't know. But those are all things to think about in a sign code. I think it's more complex than a lighting code. But it's something certainly there's a fair amount of interest in. So I don't have a lot of individual points on that. But I think it would be useful for the city to at least update and perhaps rewrite its sign code.
I would agree, Mayor. If we look at that mini-mart that used to be a gas station, they had signs from one end to the other. It's not quite as bad now. But I think that's definitely quantity of signs is an issue that we can prevent that from happening again if it's addressed. I'm dismayed by that sign at the gate that I will not mention the restaurant name that has the huge sign at the gate. And I know that was a foobar when it happened. But we sure don't want anything like that to happen again or kind of sneak under the radar. So I I think signage too is an excellent topic.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, you're stunned, I can tell.
I I appreciate the guidance that you gave on the signs. I remember this coming up at a previous council meeting. And I went through and and read not only the Ocean Shores sign ordinance, but for other cities' sign ordinances. And my perception of our ordinance is it's pretty comprehensive and it's a good starting place. But I really appreciate the refinements that you are suggesting. And and now my mind is ticking over. Okay, so so just how do we address those things? So thank you for that guidance.
All right, you're very welcome. I I hear from a lot of people. So I kind of get an idea. Yes, Dawn, sorry?
Just out of curiosity, and I have not read the sign ordinance, current sign ordinance as thoroughly as as Richard has. But have we complied with the Reed versus Town of Gilbert ruling yet? Or is that one of the things that's on our plate to do?
And which ruling is that? What was the ruling?
That's a Supreme Court ruling that basically said you cannot regulate the content of signs.
Yes, we have, we have, we have changed anything that we're doing. And if, you know, if it's in our code, we are not enforcing that. I don't think it is in our code for the most part.
So that's...
But sometimes things are through the code.
So that's one of the things that we'd have to incorporate into our analysis.
Yes, and it also, there's been findings on political signs. I I, you know, signs are kind of one of my things. And I called up the chief, the police chief, and and said, you know, the political signs are getting out of hand. I'm getting a lot of emails from people. But I also drove home from work and there were political signs up about 10 or 12 feet on a whole bunch of power poles and strictly illegal. And we can, you know, we can make a difference on where they put signs. But we can't change the content unless it's it's egregious of some kind. So it's it's always interesting. People sometimes put them on the back of our stop signs and and all sorts of things. But there are rules already in place that they're not supposed to do those things. But they just do them anyway.
Can you educate, can you educate me on the sign coming into town that you guys just referred to, a restaurant?
Oh, you know...
I think I know what you're referring to. Is that, aren't they, is that actually a billboard?
Yes, it's a billboard that kind of hangs over or behind the city welcome sign. And I think it's actually on private property.
But is it a, is it an actual legal billboard on a state highway? So it's got no, we have no control?
We we did work with our attorney at the time and we could not do anything about it.
Yeah, because I I was thinking that that might just be a billboard, which is a whole different set of rules.
Yeah, yeah. And I don't really remember the details of it anymore. Eleanor, do you remember anything more about that?
I do. I vaguely remember it was when Ken Laffey...
Lanfear?
Lanfear, that's the name. There was something that could have been done at the time and it slipped under his radar. I'm sure Alicia will remember. But there would have been a way to prevent it at the time. And my understanding is it's now grandfathered in as a conditional use. But I sure would like to look into that and see if that's really, really the case. I find it disturbing that it's overpowering what's a beautiful entryway to our community. And I will not do business with anybody that advertises on that sign. This is a matter of principle.
Yep, okay. Anything else on signs? Anyways, signs is is interesting. I think, you know, there's got to be some places that have good, straightforward sign codes out there that we can borrow shamelessly from. But also, you know, do we want to recommend any continuity among signs? Or I don't know, I I I just don't know. You go to some places and they they clearly have strict sign codes and others clearly have nothing. So at least we have something to start with.
I think it would be a great idea if one or two of us would volunteer to just drive around town and take some pictures of the signs. Because I think that could raise some questions or ideas about what we do or do not want to to allow going forward. And I certainly would be willing to do some of that if someone else would volunteer for a street.
I can add, because we'll discuss how we want to move forward.
Okay, all right. So the next area, and this is something that you and I, I think that I was told Eleanor had worked on this before you really got into the comp plan, is parking. And we've been having discussions about parking and about a lack of parking that's available in the high summer season. And, you know, people complain that it's dangerous to cross Point Brown because there's so many cars moving around. And part of the problem is there's a lack of places for them to park. We've looked into some parking things. And with parking, of course, comes restrooms. And I think that that's an important area. We we meet with a group of businesspeople and they were very interested in sort of having a centrally located parking area. They thought that that would be helpful to the businesses, but also like the one that they have at Long Beach, where it's a nice-looking area. It's a, you know, a place that people are comfortable parking and leaving their car. And they have theirs by their, oh, gosh, visitor information center. So there's a lot of things that could be done with parking. And one of the things that we did, the council, sorry, the council did a few years back was allow the the folks in the old Ace area to to when they put new parking in for the drugstore and that sort of thing, to use smaller slots. So is that something we want to do throughout the city? Do we want to have some larger and some smaller? There are a lot of oversized truck, pickup trucks that wouldn't fit in those little ones. But there are, you know, there are a lot of little cars that people drive anymore. And I drive a smaller car myself. So do we want to make more parking that way? But I don't know, Eleanor?
I can't get in and out of those little parking spots.
Yeah.
Question.
Well, you know, it it used to be during the hog wild that we would allow parking. And I'm not saying I agree or disagree, I'm just throwing it out there. We would allow parking in the medium between those two shopping areas. And I'm I'm thinking that that might be worth considering because it's a good, safe area. It's close to the restrooms we already have. It's close to shopping and restaurants. Might be, you know, convenient way to increase the parking. Not as nice as a green space, but I think we have to agree that parking is essential, particularly when you have tourists in town.
I I think so. And I talked to the council a little bit about doing a new parking area. And unfortunately, we found that the area we were looking at has a lot of wetlands. So it becomes suddenly a sort of expensive area to fill and and convert into parking. But there, one of the council members recommended that the parking area behind the bank over there and the bowling alley and that sort of area could be upgraded and asphalted, you know, with nice parking lines and that sort of thing, so that it was a more attractive area for people to park in as opposed to the gravel and the the big logs that have the creosote dripping out of them, which is not too attractive. And people have complained that they get that on their clothing, so.
Own that you're talking about?
Sorry?
Does the, does the city own that lot behind the bank in Bennett's?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
So that was an interest. There was also a property next to the old city hall down in the the north end of town that it was suggested to us might be available to the city for free to use and combine with our lot that we own there behind the permit center and put parking in there. And I think that's not a bad idea. It's, the trouble is, it's kind of a long way from other things in town. It would be nice to have something more central. But anyway, recommendations in that area would be great. And how, you know, how do we want to use the land downtown? There's a nice lot next to what used to be Dolores and Faye's that has not ever been developed. And it's very centrally located. I don't know how much parking you could get in there, but that's also been suggested. Or at least restrooms perhaps there.
Well, I I think it's something that does need to be addressed.
Okay, and and I understand you've already got a little start on it. I did see from Nick Bird what what you had at the time you stopped. So, you know, it was, it was a start. And so what whatever of those projects you all are interested in or think is perhaps more pressing, it would be great to have any one of those get a start because all of them need to be done.
I would agree.
Okay. Anything else for me?
I have...
I have a question.
Okay.
Are are you willing to let us work on any implementation ordinances associated with the comp plan?
You mean now?
Yeah.
Before the council, you know, I would wait and let the council kind of decide what they want to do. And, I mean, I just don't want you guys to spend a lot of time doing something and the council is thinking, you know, something a little different than that.
It has been our history.
I, you know, absolutely.
I mean, we've, we've worked on a lot of projects and, you know, not a one of them has been adopted.
Okay. And certainly, we have over time adopted a number of projects that have come out of the Planning Commission and and... the sign code is one of those.
Before my time, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, but I, I hear you.
Only been here for five years.
Yes, it's, it's frustrating, I know, to not have things that you've put a lot of time and effort and thought in to come forward. So we'll see what happens on that.
On that note, for, for all three of these, do you think we have city council support? When, if we work on these and bring something to the city council?
I think we do. I think one, one good thing would be maybe to have more communication back and forth. So if you guys are heading one direction, maybe you want to come and bounce it off the council before you get there. And, and if we do that sort of thing, maybe we're kind of bringing them along or you get their input along the way. And it might be more successful rather than working on something for six months and you present it. But they've kind of forgotten that, that they wanted that in the first place, maybe. Or, you know, they've kind of moved on from whatever it is. So I think that it might be something that we can do and, and that would make these projects more successful.
Two question. One of the things that in the city council, when the lighting and signage ideas came up, was it's great to work on the baby step projects, but maybe they should be done within a greater context. My recollection was virtually, well, most of the city council members raised that larger context concept in one way or another. My question really is, have we identified what that larger context is? Or is that something that we need to do as a planning commission to help formulate that context in which we do these smaller projects?
Well, it's a good question. And I don't know what would be best. It's sort of one of those chicken or egg things. I know there were some council members who liked the idea of they would form this, this larger context. But, you know, it's difficult for them to, to do that sort of thing because they're really policymakers and they can, they can make policy. But to, to formulate a large plan like that, that is going to have all these moving pieces is much, much more difficult and sort of out of their realm a bit. So it would be something that would be useful from the planning, from the planning commission. But again, if, if they're interested in doing that at some point, I, I don't want to usurp their right to do that either or to recommend usurping that. One of the things, they've got plenty on their plate. And one of the reasons I wanted to move these things over to you all is so that we're getting started on some of them. And we may never have a larger context to put them into. But, you know, like outdoor lighting, really, does it need to be part of a bigger plan? It's a pretty much standalone thing. I think when we get to sidewalks and the lighting that will be with those and, and the, the whole ball of wax, I think that might be a little different. But I think we're a long way from that, from being ready to, to address that as a council. But then again, I'm not a council member and I can't speak for them.
Mayor, is there any chance in us resurrecting Vacation Rentals by owner?
I don't know. There, it's a mixed bag on council. I think there's a lot of concern that, you know, we had two votes over time. We haven't had one for probably thirteen or fourteen years. And the votes against it were before we had Airbnb and all of those sorts of things. So I don't know, I don't know what's going to happen with that.
Well, I just.
I, I have not heard, I've not heard council members anxious to do anything with it.
We spend time addressing that too.
Yep.
And then we're looking back. And, you know, I understand Greg's frustration when we spend time really thinking it through, spending a lot of meeting time. And then it just kind of disappears. It feels like we wasted a lot of time when we could have been working on something that would go through.
Yep. And I, I believe that these are things that will go through. I, I, the council would like to do a development plan. And I have no idea what that, what the ones who are interested in doing that are thinking about and what it would look like. I see what others have, but it's very individual city to city. So I, I wouldn't want to venture to say what it is they might come up with if, if they come up with something. I just, you know, to me, the planning aspect is the planning commission. And working with the council, I think, can be helpful. But the council trying to do planning has not been successful for us in the past. And it's a, a huge time sink, as you know, to try and do that. And they've got to work through doing ordinances, resolutions and everything, every council meeting. And there's no time left for that sort of thing. Am I disheartened you all?
No, not at all.
I, I think, I think there just are things that we can get done. And I, I want to move forward on them and, and get them done. And I will do everything I can to get the comp plan in front of the council as quickly as we can after the first of the year. It's still their decision what goes on their agenda.
So I have an offer for the city council and the city as the council addresses the comp plan. And, and the offer is I was instrumental in learning how to properly use Microsoft Word to format the document so it's consistent throughout. And as the city council makes changes and adjustments, I would happily volunteer my time to take whatever the city council creates and make the formatting consistent again if the formatting gets, gets mucked up. Formatting is much more than going up to the, to the line at the top and, and saying aerial at, at twelve point. It's, it's much more complex than that. And, you know, that's an offer I make if the council or the city finds it useful.
Okay, all right. And we will pass that offer on. You got Scott and I both between us, we ought to be able to remember.
Just to let everybody know, I talked, I've talked to Linda a few times about the, about the comp plan. And so we're not under any kind of time restraints for any of it. Linda recommended that the council start with chapter one and go straight through it and not, not bounce all over. Thought it might be much more effective that way.
Okay. And Scott will be working with Linda to have, you know, schedule her to come and, and talk to the council and, and help them through the process. But, you know, how they choose to go through it is of course up to them. So we'll just see. Okay. Shall I go away and let you all meet then?
Mayor, before you go, what about the dune management plan?
The dune management plan?
Dunes management, that was something we talked about, I think, last summer before we got onto homeless stuff.
Okay. I, I don't really know. I know that people sent me some materials, articles and that sort of thing. But I don't know that anything has been done on that.
Oh, nothing has.
Sorry?
It was a request from the, from the city council to the planning commission before we started on the homeless issue. We never, never got around to the dunes management plan. But it's been so long since it came up to council that it broadly should be. It, it probably is not where it was at the time. So it needs to be reformulated.
Okay, we're talking deer management?
No, dunes management.
Okay, I thought Tanya said deer management. Did I misunderstand Tanya?
Yes, I said dunes, do you?
Dunes, okay, all right. Then it makes more sense to me. It's, I'm, I'm not sure where the council is on that right now. As you know, we're putting in soon, maybe even this winter, if we get the, the ability to do so, a fire break on the, would you call it the brack side of the dunes or the front side of the dunes? The side by the hotels. A fifty foot fire break along where the length of the hotels, about two thirds of that is wetland or wetland buffers. And it's going to be a massive permitting project. So we're working on that. We're also working on the High Dune Trail, which kind of goes down the middle. And it also has some wetland implications. And we have some grant money for that. But I have not heard this, the council discussing at all a dune management plan.
I think the context that it came up, it was during this discussion about fire control along the hotel row, but also about maintaining view corridors.
Okay. So it, I think it is the same thing. I think we're just calling it by two different names. I think you are talking about the ocean shore, the fire, the fire break behind the hotels. And I don't know if we've called that. I think we're mixing the High Dunes Trail up with the fire break. But the fire break is actually moving forward. In fact, we just had a movement, we had a meeting yesterday with ecology and the Army Corps of Engineers. And we hope to begin work on that in January, February, March of next year, at least to the first stage of mitigation on the fire break with removing all of the vegetation that is behind the non, what are called non-wetland corridors, which is about a third of that property. So that, that's moving forward. We, we anticipate doing that.
I think, I think what she's talking about too, though, there was a, a thought at, at one time. And I think one of the hotels in particular was pushing this, that we have view corridors that we would take the vegetation out between the ocean and the hotel as opposed to just doing a fire break that runs along the backside of the hotels. And I don't know that any, any more thought has gone into that. I think the hotels are thrilled to get the fire break and start someplace.
Well, I, the only, I mean, I'm glad to hear that there's some, some, been some discussion and perhaps even progress on both of those issues. But, you know, in the interest of, you know, the whole dune, it seems like it should be made, any decisions about dune management should be made comprehensively. Especially given the, the significance of the dunes relative, frankly, the survival of ocean shores. I mean, I, I think, you know, I appreciate how we've got to balance our, our users' interest and recreational interests. But we also, I hope, take into account all the things that we're proposing and don't inadvertently wipe out the, the effectiveness of the dune and the vegetation that's there for keeping the peninsula here. I think that's called, I think it's called cumulative effects when you're in the environmental assessment business.
Yeah. I, I, I hear what you're saying. And, you know, having a study on a six mile long set of dunes fairly wide at certain points might be useful. Part of the problem though is not just money, though it's partly money. We have fires in the dunes and we've had significant fires in the dunes. And, you know, in a high wind, that would not be a good thing for ocean shores because the predominant wind is coming from the ocean. So we have to balance the fire needs. And certainly our, our fire people are indicating to us we at least need the fire break. And it does interfere with the wetlands. We are hoping that we will not do any damage at all to the wetlands. We'll just be able to take the vegetation down and it will gradually grow up again. But right now, some of the vegetation comes right up to buildings and it's on city property, so.
I appreciate, I appreciate.
Have to weigh all of those things. I, I hear you though.
It, it would be nice though, to the extent
I know.
it was possible to combine both impacts into one corridor. So that, you know, we're not creating two corridors that have the same challenges in terms of environmental impacts. I hope that that's been discussed, that, you know, is there a possibility combining the High Dune Trail and the fire break, for example?
Okay. The High Dune Trail was actually recommended to us. We were talking about doing just a single thing behind the hotels. And we had kind of fancy plans for it at one time, you know how those things go. And we, we were told by Rick Maras from ecology that we would be much better off putting our dune trail in the middle because there are the least wetlands there to affect. And he was more concerned about wetlands than other things. The, the fire break, two thirds of that area is wetlands and wetland buffers. That's a huge amount that is going to have to be hand cared for because we can't disturb the roots, we can't use machinery or do any of that sort of thing. So there's going to be a big effort that goes into, to sort of preserving what those wetlands do for us. Whereas the High Dune Trail, because it's out in the middle and there's not nearly the, the wetlands there, there's a small wetland and buffer, what, close to, gosh, I think Pacific Avenue that we're going to have to deal with. And it may be that we will bridge that. We don't really have a plan for that yet, though we have people working on the plan. But yeah, there, it's very complex. We live in a very complex environment here by the ocean. And I'm sure people who live in the mountains would say that theirs is equally complex.
Well, what concern I have about a trail through the dunes, I think a center trail is, is good in that it limits the access into the dunes. But keeping people on that trail so they don't disturb birds, which have a huge habitat there, and other wildlife is, is going to be a challenge.
You know, I, I think that right now, the number of people who traverse the dunes from, I mean, every single hotel has a trail that goes to the ocean. So there are thousands and thousands of people who are walking back and forth on those trails, at least all summer long. I don't think that having the bicycle and walking trail going the other direction is going to be a big problem. And one of the things that we're, you know, talking about in the planning is should we consolidate some of those trails so that there are fewer trails so that they do have less impact on the wetlands in particular? And that may be something that we're able to do if we can kind of wean people. if we can kind of wean people away from the most direct route, rather than having to go, you know, fifty feet this way to get on a bigger trail.
Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do our best and we'll be as, uh, open and transparent as possible in the planning and, and everybody will have a chance to look at it. It, you can never be perfect. Uh, but we'll do our best to take all the environmental things into consideration as we go through these, both of these processes. I mean, Scott and I have sat in on a lot of meetings, uh, trying, in particular, the, um, fire break. Because there's so many wetlands involved and some of them are, you know, completely across that area. And that's one of the reasons we wouldn't likely put a trail through there, is you'd be disturbing the whole wetland. As opposed to just a small amount, uh, at one end. But, you know, we'll, we'll do our very best on those things and, uh, we will get the best advice we can. Okay? And I am hap-
One last item. Have you heard any, uh, support for veg management, um, policy and/or ordinance?
A?
Vegetation, vegetation management. When we-
You mean throughout the city? No.
Well, it's, it's in the, it's in the comp plan, but, uh.
Yeah, it's daunting. Uh, and, uh, you know, you have some people that, that want to live with their vegetation right up next to them, kind of like the secret place and, and other people, uh,
Prefer clear cuts.
Yeah, we're, if we have a fire, you know, you're gonna, you're not gonna get out of there. So there, there's real problems with that. We will continue and, uh, how much of a lost cause it is, I don't know, but we will continue to have the Scotch broom eradication project, uh, going on. But when I look at the south end and look at the amount of Scotch broom down there, uh, it really feels like, uh, you know, we're handpicking some and, uh, working it down here, uh, and, and there's this mass there that's just reproducing like mad with its fifty thousand seeds each when it plant, those are something like that. But you got, you're gonna do what you-
Unless it burns, it's not going to get any better, unfortunately. And, and it's prone to burning. And so it's a double-edged sword.
Yep, yep.
But that, I think, uh, in the comp plan, our, our emphasis on vegetation management has more to do with lot clearing. And being, you know, we know that the ordinances say that, uh, you're supposed to submit a, a vegetation management proposal with your, your lot development. But it doesn't seem like it's enforced at all because, uh, what, uh, a, a number of us have witnessed is that, uh, if it's a spec, a spec home, it basically gets clear cut. Uh, and, you know, we're taking out, especially the, the large, uh, spruces. There, they tend to be, uh, you know, a long-term resident of the site and they'll certainly not going to grow back in our lifetime.
Yeah, no, I hear you. Uh, we have, uh, the problem of having relatively small lots. Uh, and you're right, a developer does not want to fool with trying to retain trees uh, that they've got to work around for the entire building period. Uh, and unless we can justify some reason that they have to do that, it doesn't happen. Uh, we do our best. Uh, I think that that's the battle that we fight all the time. Uh, and it's one of those things too, I think, when we have so much building going on and it's like the light issue, suddenly everybody's got more new neighbors than they had before. And a lot more light leaking in from all of those places around them.
And if they leave their trees standing, they wouldn't have that problem.
Say what?
If they would leave the vegetation, it would not be near as much of a problem.
Well, I'm not sure about that, but I don't know how you leave, leave the vegetation when you have a tiny lot. I know our lot was cleared, uh, of virtually everything, uh, when it was built, I think back in the nineties, it was long before we owned it. And the guy before us who owned the property spent his time planting trees. So we've done a lot of thinning of trees. And, you know, I, I think that most people are going to do something. I know one of the suggestions to us as well has been, uh, require that people follow through on their, uh, their landscaping plan, particularly contractors, before, uh, you allow people to move into the property. And that, because a lot of people, it's felt, uh, never landscape it. They just sort of let it be what it is. And there are those who think that we should, you know, we should have rules like that and enforce that. I don't know.
Every time you have leverage is before you give an occupancy permit.
Well, exactly. How that would work out, I mean, that's another one of those things you'd have to see what other people are doing and if there's been any legal ramifications of that sort of thing. Uh, you know, how far can you push these things?
So, kind of a parallel track on, on that subject is, is the city still looking for a city planner? And if the answer is yes, where are we at in that process?
So Scott and I just sort of look at one another.
Yeah, exactly. Who goes first?
Uh, I have not put a city planner in the budget for this next year. We had one person who applied for our position. Planners are very, very difficult to find. Uh, Scott has been doing some, uh, checking around and seeing, uh, how we might, entice someone. And we really haven't had any luck so far. I think we need to get over COVID. And I hope that that will be mid-year or so or thereafter and that we can then focus a little better and people will be more willing to come for interviews and, and do all of the things. But no, we're not, we're not working on that actively at this point.
Good, thank you.
Gosh, I feel like I've come to a town hall. Anything else? All right, then thank you very much for having me. Uh, I'm happy to come back and I know Scotty is as well, anytime. Uh, I really would encourage you, whatever you decide to work on, that you keep in touch and, uh, that we do updates with the councils so that everybody's still on the pa, same page and, and that they know you're working on something. As opposed to kind of, uh, they're suddenly surprised when you, we give something to them that they'd forgotten a year earlier, you know? Because times change and, and people are all busy. So, anyway, thank you very much. Uh, I will, um, let you get on with your meeting. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll stick around to the end, just be good sport.
What a guy.
Well, Dan, in keeping with, uh, the mayor's suggestion of maintaining, uh, communication with the council as we go through these processes, uh, my thought, uh, Scott, if you have the time to attend all of our meetings, so that you can help facilitate that communication.
I definitely do try making the planning in the freshwater ways. I'm trying to attend as many of those as I can. Uh, I mean, I never know what's going to come on my given day. Sometimes I, I get legal calls or police issues I have to deal with, but I will definitely make the effort to attend as many as I possibly can.
That'd be great. Okay, our, uh, three things that, you know, we can work on are dark skies signage and parking. And I believe we've got, uh, at least a couple of people that's been trying to work on a couple of.
And signage, like they said, they've already taken some significant steps. You probably want to reach out to Pat Brunstad because they've had meetings about the signage issue regarding, you know, when they had the sort of, you know, revival of the city in the aftermath of COVID. I know that committee met several times and signage was one of the things they discussed. Uh, so they've done a lot of work on it already.
Yeah.
And we're still meeting.
And you're, right, there you go.
I'm Rich Hartman to lead up the signage. Business owner and already involved in it, makes sense for him to do that. Does anybody want to work with Rich on that?
Uh, I, I think that's a great idea. Uh, uh, you're already involved in it. Uh, uh, so I, I think that's a great idea. You, you got soft, I couldn't hear.
Pick on the new guy.
Pick on the new guy, exactly. I, when I first heard about the, the city council, uh, wanting the planning commission to work on lighting, I did a lot of initial, uh, research and, uh, and I would be happy with the, with the rest of the commissioners', uh, approval to take the lead on lighting. And, and if the commissioners are, uh, like that idea, I created a document with some foundational information. Uh, the mayor mentioned, for example, enforcement, uh, and there's several ways to approach enforcement. And one way makes absolutely the most sense and is relatively inexpensive and very easy. Uh, you check how many lumens are at the border, yada, yada, yada. So, so I have a document prepared that, uh, I would be happy to send to all of the commissioners and, and anybody else who is interested as a starting place, so that we're all on the same page as we discuss.
That'd be great. Uh, yeah, I'd be happy to have you, uh, take the lead on that. Does anybody have objections to that?
No. Uh, Richard, have you seen, uh, the brochures and materials from the Dark Skies Association? I, I, I read through everything I could find on the Dark Skies website. Some, the Dark Skies, uh, sample ordinance, their draft, whatever they call that, I forgot what they called it. But I think it's much, much, much more complex than the ordinance in Ocean Shores needs to be. Uh, the mayor's, uh, discussion on Dark Skies, uh, gave me some ideas that, that, uh, some of which this document I already created addressed, but some others that I think warrant our commissioner discussion. Just my thought, though, is that because of the fact that the International Dark Sky Association has already put a lot of effort into it, we ought to be able to, to steal a lot of information from them. There, there's, there's a lot of good information there, uh, but a lot of it goes into a lot more complexity. Uh, and it's geared for big communities like Seattle or New York, uh, and not necessarily a small population on a small, um, peninsula like we have here. But the, we absolutely all need to look at the information DarkSkies.org is presenting and see what of that information we want to integrate specifically into what we come up with. And, and my document gives links to some of that information.
Dan, do we have time for a little discussion on this right now or is it inappropriate? So I, I have a home in Sun River. There probably is no bigger, uh, light restrictor than Sun River, Oregon. There are massive differences between Sun River, Oregon and Ocean Shores, Washington. There is no wrong opinion, because as you know, we'll have lots of opinions in our city. But one thing that I feel is massively important is when you buy your piece of property or your home or your business, you are buying it based on the laws and the restrictions that were in place when you bought it. I don't see how we could ever push new rules on existing homes and businesses. You, you can't make somebody take money out of their pocket to change what they've already done.
No, but you can provide incentives for them to come into more compliance with what we want to do.
Your incentives mean money to make the changes.
It doesn't prevent us from developing new, uh, recommended, uh, ordinances and, and new restrictions. But, uh, while I agree you can't force somebody, um, to, uh, to spend the money, uh, you can certainly provide incentives for them to do so.
Financial incentives?
Financial incentives among them. There are variety of ways of doing incentives, but financial is one.
You just can't put the financial burden on people. What you can do is have new rules for new development and that I totally understand.
Development, but also, uh, new rules for remodeling or redoing. So. Whatever communities have done, uh, in their ordinance is just what Don is suggesting that, that, uh, the ordinance applies to all new development. And old developments are grandfathered in with the proviso that as remodeling occurs, uh, then, uh, they're required to comply with the, uh, with the new ordinance because of the remodel. That's the same thing that happens with, with signs. Existing signs have been grandfathered in, in many communities. And then as you fix the sign, if, if it's just changing the letters, that's a no impact. But if you're physically changing the sign from a marquee sign to an awning sign, then the new ordinance applies. And I think that that's the approach. And, and Rich, I hear exactly what you're saying in the document and, and I'm waiting for Dan to tell me whether I email this to each of you or email to him and he emails it to you. But in that document, uh, on, as it happened, on the day that the city council addressed Dark Skies, my neighbor across the canal for, for the prior several days had turned on a huge, uh, light that was brighter than the moon, that, that just illuminated my entire backyard. It was a pike poking me in the eye. Uh, it, it was, it's, I put a photograph on the document I'm going to send. And, and even if it costs him money to remove that, he does not have the right to poke me in the eye with his bright light. And as it happened, uh, I, in fact, I sent that picture to all of the city council members. And, and as it happened, I think that property went up for sale, uh, and the light went out a few days later. Uh, but if it comes back on, that light needs to be eliminated, uh, because I have rights also.
That's, I hear, I hear how you feel and I probably feel, would feel exactly the same way. But it's his house. It, it's, it's about, ultimately it gets to be about how much we want to try to restrict people's rights. And where do their rights then infringe on our rights? It's, it's a complicated issue and it's a heated issue.
It, it is a complicated issue and in my research, and again, I, you know, we are a, a group of commissioners who will make the final decision. But the, the, the enforcement that makes the most sense to me is you have the right to eliminate your property however you see fit. But the ordinance can be written so that your light trespass stays within your property boundaries and not infringes on your neighbor's property boundaries. And that's a relatively easy thing to do with shielding. So even if you've got one of those big monster halogen, uh, sixteen gazillion megawatt lights, if you shield it so that the cone of light stays within your property lines, put as much light as you want perhaps, although there's some backlight and scatter light and other things that are worth considering. So I, I hear what you're saying and I think that it's critical that we respect the property owner's rights. Uh, I have property on both sides. That one is no longer a property. My next door neighbor, uh, on the west side, uh, they're part-timers. And they have been leaving an outside light on that sends out so much light that I have to pull the curtains on that wall. Otherwise, in the middle of the night, I could get up and read a book. Otherwise, in the middle of the night, I could get up and read a book at my dining room table because of their light. That's an infringement on my rights and, and, and. And so when we respect each other and each other's rights, then we all get along fine. But when we live in it's all about me society and the rest of you don't matter, then. Then I think that we need to examine what those rules are, what those ordinances are and, and. So anyway, that's, that's a discussion. I, I think that deserves full engagement from all of us. And, and as I already said, I won't beat the horse any further. But a lot of those things have been grandfathered in, in other cities. And they change as the, as, as those properties are remodeled and upgraded.
Well, I agree with you, Richard. I, I think that my rights stop the minute they start infringing on your rights. And when your neighbor has a light that's lighting up your property and making you uncomfortable. It, you have to say no. His rights do not overshine yours.
That, that, you know, that's, that's a lesson that I taught my kids as they were growing up and my kids are in their 50s now. And that's the lesson I taught them. Then you have the, the right to do anything you want, but your rights stop at the next person's toenails. And if we always.
Richard, Richard.
I shut up.
Send me, send me what you've got so we, we remain, we keep the protocol going and I'll send it out to everybody.
Perfect. I, I'm happy to do that, Dan.
Okay, thank you. Do we want to tackle parking?
I think parking is an area that we absolutely can time on. And I don't know who would like to take lead on that, but one of the first steps that I would be interested in learning more about. Is what properties does the city currently own that could be repurposed as properties? And what properties, the mayor hinted that there were a couple of properties that the city might be able to purchase. That could also be used as, as, as for parking. And, and maybe Scott can give us, you know, some, some, some addresses or, or something that, that tells us what options might be available. And I think that it was, there was Eleanor that asked about somebody to drive around with and, and take pictures of existing. And I'd be happy to participate in that, just to get a feel for what's out there.
Well, yeah, signs, no, signs.
So Dan, Dan, would you like me to take the lead on parking, just so you get it assigned?
Yeah, that'd be great. And I think one of the first things I'd do would be contact Nick.
Scott, Scott, I think you probably have some stuff for us anyway, right?
Yeah, no, I mean, the number one spot that we've looked at, because we took this, there, there were two possibilities that we were looking at to, you know, for downtown retail parking. And number one is repay or paving the surface of where we currently have the city's, you know, trash collection behind Bennett's there.
Right.
Turning that into a parking lot. That's the one that obviously makes the most sense. The second one was James, who owns Pacific Paradise, was willing to donate the lot next door to Pacific Paradise. If we turn that into parking, the problem is it's got a lot of wetlands that would take a little mitigation effort for it. But I mean, the one just, the one just seemed, the Pacific Paradise next to the golf course, I mean, golf course.
The other thing, Scott, if you could, and Dan, I'll go ahead and take the lead on it and I'll gather some of this information on behalf of the commission. But Scott, if, I'll send you an email to remind you, but if you could also. In addition to those two items that you just mentioned, give me some thoughts about what if we took to turn the convention center parking into a multi-story parking garage?
We, we looked at that, you know, sort of like the Quinalt has obviously considered that as well, like turning it into a combined either multi-story parking or like a tsunami evacuation tower. Multi-story parking and the reason the tsunami evacuation tower was added to that is because there might be grant funding money that we could get. From various agencies, including FEMA and the State Department of Emergency Management, and that way it could serve a multi-functional use. We can get half of it paid for. The problem is, is when Quinalt did a review plan to do something similar, the cost was just absolutely exorbitant. It was, it was in the, you know, almost the tens of millions of dollars to do it. And so when we heard, you know, the, the budget numbers that they came up with based on their assessment, which they were going to do by the casino, we sort of backed off that idea. It's not like it's entirely off the table, but that's what we're looking at. But that's just so you know the background.
With Dan's permission, I'll send you an email requesting the information that you do have and that way I can, I can consolidate it for the commission.
Okay, and I'll be happy to try to find that Quinalt study as well, because they didn't look into that and that way we can take a look at the cost. It gets out there somewhere. I just don't have it in my inbox.
Scott, and I realize it's been probably 14 years, but at one point I was looking at building in another city elevated parking. And it was about, back then it was about a million dollars an acre to go up.
Right.
So it surprises me that you were saying it was tens of millions of dollars.
It, it, that may be, I mean, it may be, I can't, I honestly can't remember, but it was the cost, also the building within Ocean Shores on this. Something to do with the sand and the way that Ocean Shores is on soft sand and then for the fill of it and then, I mean, I, I honestly can't remember if it was in the tens of millions or in the low millions. But it was not anything, it was not the like $300,000 we might spend doing, you know, several single story, you know, not, not story, flat parking lots. It was just, it was cost prohibitive. It was cost prohibitive enough so that the Quinalt backed off doing it. Put it that way. But if I find that, I will ask for it. I'll look for it and I'll send that study out to you. And it, it may turn out to be less than I imagined. It might have even been like, I might have remembered it wrong, 2.5 million dollars. But even then, that's the entire city's general fund budget. So it's just something we, we couldn't afford.
My, Dan, did.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Dan, did the mayor bring you up to speed on why the parking issue has come to the front and center? About, okay, so on our economic group panel. The discussion was that. Any, I, I know that, I don't know if this committee dealt with the plan that came up. What was it, two or three years ago about trying to develop the entryway to town with sidewalks and, and such, and didn't necessarily go all that well. But the need to have off-street parking for the Point Brown between the entrance to the city and Chance. And that there were some inexpensive areas hypothetically off-street behind towards where City Hall is now. That would be much more economical to push tourists to for the future. And it was just trying to get future planning in, in place to have inexpensive parking with restrooms like they do in other cities. Cannon Beach, you name it, Seaside, whatever it might be. And that, that was kind of the basis of, you know, why would you choose by, you know, the, the gaming area, the pet, the putt putt golf center and stuff? It was because of that reason, trying to get parking off the street and then have that open for future. Beautification and sidewalks and other things coming into town.
Rich is right. Yeah, that's correct.
Rich, just so you know. We're not allowed to. The planning commissioners, other than myself, are not allowed to send out all planning commissioners at one time. So if you write a document up, you've got to send it to me or Alicia.
Unless, because, yeah, because that's an open public meetings trigger.
So back to what Scott was saying about the multi-story, that was my initial thought, is anything that we build that's that massive. We're building it on, on, on a sand foundation and how many hundreds of feet do you have to go down? Before it becomes tsunami proof? And, and so I could see that a multi-story desirable, but if we had bedrock 25 or 50 feet down, doable. But I think our bedrock is maybe, maybe hundreds of feet, if not a half a mile or so down. And so, so, so anyway. A, a flat parking, I think is much more affordable. But we run into the wetlands mitigation issue. A lot of that area between Ocean Shores Boulevard and Point Brown, although it's vacant property, most of that is wetlands. And so then what does the cost become to turn that into a parking lot? And it's, I think, pretty expensive. I don't fully understand the, the wetlands mitigation land bank and how much that actually costs. But wetlands is a factor.
Well, I think Scott and the mayor were actually working on those calculations.
Yeah, exactly. But just to give you a snapshot of something, I do know what it costs, the tsunami evacuation tower. And that, this is not paid for by, this is not just taxpayer money. This is with federal grants involved and state grants and money appropriate to legislature, but just the tsunami evacuation tower.
Something got him.
I, I guess. Maybe he'll sign back on. His battery went dead.
So we do have. We do have one. One public, I think Marlene.
No, I don't have anything. Thanks for asking.
Still on, just, do you want to move to hearing public comment?
I, no, I don't have any public comment.
I was just informed that Scott will not be back on his battery on his laptop bed and the charger is at his home. So.
Okay.
Want me to let you guys know?
Thank you.
Nice to hear from you, Alicia. I assume she's there.
I think that was Sarah.
Oh, okay. Just for the notes, do I include Sarah as a, as being a participant in this?
Yes.
Okay. Are we ready to wrap this up?
Does anybody else have anything?
No.
So I, I do have, I'm going to send you my preliminary document. But I guess what I'm really asking is, is do we know at this point what we're going to discuss on the next meeting? What sequence we're going to take these three big projects in?
Well, it, from the top of my head, I would say that we'll probably talk about dark skies first because. I, I don't know how much Rich will have ready at that point, but we can talk about both in the two hour meeting.
Yeah, I really need to have an open discussion on the signs. I, I know what's, I feel that I know what people are asking for. But once again, it really, you know, I appreciate the open discussion and to be able to throw things off of each other and. And for you folks to, to think like a business person while taking into account what maybe a tourist would feel comfortable with and a resident would. So I, I like this forum and, you know, it's, it's, I don't want to oversimplify it, but it's, it's two or three things, I think, that are really important to businesses. And it's a matter of how do we want to address, address it and then be able to go in a direction to get. An answer or a direction for the council to consider.
Well, we'll definitely give time, time due next meeting, Rich, so we can discuss that. We don't want you to slow down at all. And Richard's already got something prepared. And like Don was saying, the dark skies initiative, the national thing, that's just huge. I read through it and that's just huge. So those who want to look at that, feel free. But I'll pass on what Richard has done already. Okay. Our next meeting is November 10th and our notes are to be taken by Eleanor.
Achoo.
Hey, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I have a second.
All second.
Where'd you?
Who seconded it?
Rich, Rich Hartman.
Rich did? Well, right now I've got a court hearing in Texas on the 12th, so I don't think I'm going to be here for that meeting.
Okay.
I'd rather be here.
Well, it was. See everybody.